Good morning. It is October 5, 2022, and the time is 9:02 a.m. We are here for the council time agenda that is preceded, in this case, by two work sessions. First, we have the 2023 Annual Construction Program and 2023 to 2028 TIP, or Transportation Improvement Program. So let's get started with that. And who do we turn to on this? Ken? Good morning. Ken, later.
Yeah, good morning, Chair Bowerman and Council. Thank you for being with us this morning. As the Chair mentioned, we're here to present the work session information for the Annual Construction Program for 2023 and the Transportation Improvement Program for 2023 and 2028. And I am just doing a brief introduction. As the newly appointed county engineer, I wanted to say thank you to the council for that. And then I'd just like to go quickly and introduce Chris Carl, our interim programming manager. He's been burning the midnight oil to get things ready for us today. And I'll turn it over to Chris, and then we'll be available for questions.
Thank you, Ken. Congratulations on your position. Well deserved. Morning, Chair Bowerman, Clark County Council, fellow Clark County employees and Clark County public. My name is Chris Carl, interim programming manager with Clark County Public Works. As Ken mentioned, we're presenting the 2023-2028 Transportation Improvement Program and the 2023 Annual Construction Program, which is actually the first year of our TIP, if you will, in a more detailed manner. We have to follow law in both of these. And next slide, please. And that's what we're going to be talking about today, is to review both programs and to move this forward hopefully for the next phase, which is the November 15th adoption of both of these programs, both of which under law need to be adopted before the budget is adopted in December. Next slide, please. A little bit about the agenda. We're going to talk about some principles and legalities, how the TIP is developed from the Capital Facility Plan under the Growth Management Act, the evaluation system we use to pull projects directly from that Capital Facilities Plan, then project areas and funding details, a brief summary of all the current financials that are in our TIP, our construction start schedule for the next six years and beyond, risks and unknowns as we know them, as well as steps and status of where we are currently. Next slide, please. Some of the guiding principles and legalities, the principles that the council has set to administer debt service as a priority, and secondarily, safety and preservation of existing assets, preserving the assets we have. And a third tier is the capital projects, and that's where our TIP comes in through that Capital Facility Plan. I'm sorry, yeah, Capital Facility Plan. Legal requirements, the Revised Code of Washington, Washington Administrative Code, lay out some guidelines for what we need to do as far as the law is concerned. All capital road projects need to be in that ACP and TIP. The difference being that the ACP is our next year. All types of funding sources, for example, grants, traffic impact fees, REIT II, real estate excise tax, they all need to be defined in that ACP in order for us to use them. If we didn't have a grant source mentioned, we wouldn't be able to utilize those grant funds in that year. The scoring is a... And I'll get to a slide on that. But that's through the county engineer that we develop and apply the priority programming to it. And what that is, is scoring that we take from the Capital Facility Plan and provide some guidelines to how those projects will fare in terms of importance. A lot of that is based on current grants, guidelines, and how important those projects would be to a potential granting agency. So not only do we get priority from our own list, that helps us pursue grant opportunities accordingly. Before the council adopts the December budget, both of these are needed to, again, be adopted. And the TIP follows the policies in the comprehensive plan, specifically via the Capital Facilities Plan, which is a list of projects currently 2015 to 2035. From there, we use... Next slide, please. Here's a breakdown of how it flows from the Washington State Growth Management Act through our Clark County Comprehensive Plan that studies the arterial atlas as well as the sub-area circulation plans. Resultant of that is the 20-year Capital Facilities Plan, which is a mirror of what our TIP is on a grander scale because it focuses on 20 years, where we only bring in a six-year population into our Transportation Improvement Program. Again, the Annual Construction Program, being that first year of the TIP, and then from there, as we develop projects, we're by law required to offer... Oh, sorry, start a capital road project number. It's how we identify our projects through County Road Administrative Board policies. Next slide, please. From the Capital Facility Plan, we take the projects and apply a ranking system. This ranking system has previously gone through public, council, various boards. And it's always something that's being looked at in terms of being improved as things drop, more so on the tertiary side than anything else. But our main categories are safety, economic development, and mobility. Safety, unfortunately, collisions and road features are part of that. We get better scoring on the grant side as well. A lot of grants are utilizing that. So a third of our projects are based on safety, which is also one of Public Works' main priorities across the board. Economic development is considered mainly for industrial, commercial jobs creation as well as freight movement, mobility, route connectivity, and multimodal. Points are given more access to bicycle and routes and transit as well as shopping. And there are some areas that are crossovers between all three, concurrency level of service, VC ratio, volume capacity, as well as urban holding areas. All this compares it to the arterial atlas, so it needs to be an arterial atlas to have a reference. We utilize the cross-sections of each roadway accordingly. And then there are some other sources that we get points with. Environmental impacts, the less environmental impact, the better. The more environmental impacts, the more expensive it will be. When we get public and outside agency support, that helps us move a project forward, as well as when we receive grants to leverage the county side of cost, both through the County Road Fund, traffic impact fees, and real estate excise tax. So if we are able to get grants, we lessen the direct cost from the public with those grants. Next slide, please. This is a summary, as it stands, of our current program. Talk briefly about our urban road projects, which I'll come back to. That's the majority of our major 179th Street corridor, for example, all projects associated with that. But we also have our ongoing programs that are managed in their own group. So we have a bridge, we have road preservation, we have a rural road, sidewalk, and transportation safety. And when we rank our projects, a lot of these smaller projects wouldn't rank very well compared to a larger throughfare. They're not going to have the traffic. They're not going to have certain things that a larger project will. But we do rank them individually. That keeps projects competitive, especially for grants accordingly. For example, our bridge program over the next six years has 14 locations of bridges on there. We're going to have some strengthening, some scour. And through federal highway program, through Washington State Department of Transportation, the majority of which is covered in grants. We have a very small amount of that for the road fund. Contrary to that, our road preservation is very hungry with local funds. They are not entitled to traffic impact fees, or they don't have many grant opportunities. We do, however, receive county arterial preservation funds through CRAB, County Road Administration Board. So that's about $4 million there. Our sidewalk and ADA commitments are solid. We have a current commitment of $2 million a year for ADA upgrades. Part of the transportation impact program here is a request to kind of change our direction. We currently utilize a year-by-year approach for our ADA ramps that prequel the hot-mix asphalt, the HMA projects. When that falls behind, it slows down the HMA work and then as well as the guardrails that come in after those elevations are set. What we're asking for in this program is to use a more managed approach where we could study two or three years in advance and then allow that work to flow through into yearly construction projects. The change being, we were doing it on a year-by-year basis, but once that one year falls behind, then it backs up the HMA and again, the guardrail. So I didn't want to miss that in this request.
Nine to 11.
Our main category is our urban road projects. That's our main individual projects that you'll see in the Transportation Improvement Program. And part of that is 33 and a half million grants for that, $76 million total projected and secured grants. There are $44 million of secured grants and $32 and a half million of projected. Within our program as well, we're utilizing a lot of traffic impact fees, just under $46 million. Real estate excise tax, $30 million. Heavy-on-the-road fund, one of our main sources of funding, a little over $81 million as well as partnerships. We have about .7 million between our sidewalk program and our transportation safety. And there's an additional partnership that still needs a little resolution on one of our larger 179th Street corridor projects. Next slide. This is our planned construction schedule as it sits. There is going to be a bullet mentioned on the risks and unknowns that our biological assessment or environmental permitting may cause some delays as that's going to be a little bit of a longer process than we have in the past. But as it stands now, the gray projects are projects that are currently in construction and completing by the end of the year. 10th Avenue at 149th to 154th Avenue. And that's an improvement just south of the previous 10th Avenue Bridge that was on previous Transportation Improvement Programs. Our 182nd at SR 500 project, which WashDOT handled and built in record time, a little under two weeks. Some rural projects, Manly Road and Northeast Munch, as well as a bridge replacement in the rural area, Davis Bridge Replacement. Some of our projects that are planned for '23 and beyond, again, extending on the rural side, have a project at 182nd Avenue and Risto Road, put around about in there to help traffic flow through that area. Southeast Blair Road, which is an extension east of our previous project, Northeast Blair Road. We have some bridges. Most of our bridges are in the rural area, as well as Mason Creek Barrier, which is going to improve fish passage, as well as rebuild that culvert. Sidewalk programs that are coming in. Hazel Dell Avenue is a pedestrian and bicycle program. That's going to also benefit Sacagawea School in that area. It's going to provide a continuous sidewalk from 99th Street to 117th Avenue. 68th Street Sidewalk, which is going from Highway 99 to St. John's Road, and that's in a partnership with the City of Vancouver. And that will be kicking off soon. We're currently going into construction, and that should start early next year. Various Highway 99 projects currently in planning is 102nd to 104th Street, a future segment, 110th to 117th Street, and the northeast 130th Avenue pedestrian improvement. So we're always looking to improve sidewalks, either with major projects or through the sidewalk program itself. Future projects, in addition to our bridges, 152nd Avenue. The blue projects are current, ones that are in process, but still need a little bit more funding. And that's going to be the 179th Street from 15th to 26th Avenue, as well as future projects that are beyond 2028. Simon Creek Avenue, realignment, 179th Street, 29th to 50th Avenue. Northwest Lakeshore from 78th Street. 72nd Avenue, that's going to be from 122nd up to 502 and Battleground eventually. But that's going to be phased into at least three separate projects. Within this construction schedule, I did want to clarify that the 179th Street, 29th and 50th Avenue, I have $38 million. That's been rolled back a bit. The 29th Avenue project will be a roundabout. The 50th Avenue project will be an intersection improvement, left-turn lane. They're going to clear it a bit. But that'll be a 10- to 15-year fix in terms of temporary before a deeper, more costly design is ready. But that'll allow traffic flow in the interim. A lot of these projects will slide based on how long they take on the permitting side. But from a standpoint of what we've brought to council last year, we did mention that there was some increases to these projects. And we did a best-case and worst-case scenario. Currently, we're only about 15% over what we had brought to last year's program, about $114,000, a million, excuse me, for these projects. I'll go through some of them now. Delphell Road, currently planned to construct in '26 and '27. 15th Avenue, which will be an extension of a non-existing road north of 179th Street, bending to the west to meet in with 10th Avenue, which will then close off the current 10th Avenue way to get that traffic away from the interchange. A lot of these 170th projects will also need WashDOT interchange work to sequence properly. 179th Street at 29th Avenue is going to be a roundabout. And that's scheduled for 2024, 2025. 179th Street from 15th to 26th Avenue is scheduled from 2026 to 2027. There is a request that's not listed here, but we're requesting to have a separate project of a stormwater pond at the 179th Street Whipple Creek Stormwater Facility, which will serve many of these 179th Street projects, specifically Delphell Road, 15th Avenue, 179th Street, 15th to 26th Avenues, as well as a small segment of west... Sorry, east of I-5 from the interchange butting up against our 15th Avenue project. The benefit is to simplify logistically permitting and constructability rather than rolling that into one specific project to keep it separate, help it easier to differentiate what percentages go with what project. And I'm looking for support to move in that direction. The future projects here would be the 179th Street at 50th Avenue, which is going to be that temporary, long-term, temporary, 10 to 15-years fix. Next slide, please. Some risks and unknowns. Again, the 179th Street schedule modifications. Looking for approval to separate the stormwater facility as a standalone project rather than rolling it up into another 179th Street, 15th Avenue to 26th Avenue. Knowing whether or not we receive grants, typically, we have some stragglers into September and November, and some that don't come until the middle of next year that would otherwise be eligible for grant reimbursements in 2023. That portion is pretty minor, but there are also some futuristic projected grants within those budgets numbers that I have presented. I kept those fairly conservative as to not make too many false promises. Again, a lot of the scheduling will shift that as well, as well as our ability to apply for certain grants within the years that they are available. Project delivery has been something Clark County's always done well. We mentioned in last year's presentation that we had been ravaged with staffing, people that have stayed, people that have come. Have a good team building. We still need more. But project delivery will be something that is needed to hit especially the $44 million of awarded grants that we have at this point. Always something that we consider in our program, like being that the past few years have been very challenging. You know, that's not fixed at this point. And then project schedule shifts specifically from the change of environmental permitting. The biological assessment timeline is going to take at least an additional year. There is word that they would eventually catch up, have it not as long. But for now, we have to at least factor in another year, if not longer, for our project timelines. The TIP amounts that I had mentioned, $46 million, is based on development projections. So those projections would need to come true in order to utilize those $46 million. Otherwise, that would be a backup on the County Road Fund itself. And we also reassessed the TIP and the revenues and expenditures throughout the year. Unfortunately, I did receive about a $5 million increase to some various projects as I was holding off as late as possible to get this presented, knowing that we had some changes coming. Captured the majority of them, but unfortunately, a couple came through late. So the numbers that I had on the budget, we will have about a $5 million increase over the course of six years for additional projects that have hit since I sent this through. And next slide, please. Our schedule and our steps. In September, we sent through the information that we're talking about today. Here we are, October 5th, for a county work session. Again, to move this forward to our November hearing, November 15th, for the TIP adoption and the Annual Construction Program. We're going to be doing additional public outreach through the Planning Commission work session and hearing, as well as the November 3rd Development Engineering Advisory Board. And again, this needs... The TIP and the ACP both need to be adopted prior to the December council budget adoption. And that's it. Any questions?
Counsel, do you have questions?
Madam Chair, I do.
Go ahead, Counsel Bebeji.
So forgive me for taking a couple of minutes here. But and first, got to pander a little bit to my audience. You know, engineers rule. I think you can solve all of our problems with the right amount of resources and commitment. So what I'm seeing that's missing from this presentation is something I've been advocating for since I've been on the council. And I want to keep pressing that conversation forward. So I want to go back to your arterial plan, your 20-year plan, what I would call strategic planning. We have nothing in the works, nor have we, as far as I can tell, forever, looking for resiliency, redundancy, concurrency, and keeping congestion at a manageable level by adding an additional corridor. We know development continues. As development continues, we fall farther and farther behind in concurrency. Congestion continues to grow. When you have congestion on arterials, it impacts the secondary roads. RTC data today shows that we are already there. We're getting farther and farther behind. If we don't plan for another corridor, which would bring us up on concurrency, it builds resiliency and redundancy into the system, whether you have accidents, law enforcement, a snow event, icing event, rain, or some catastrophic span comes down because of the subjection zone. We need resiliency, and we only get that from additional crossings. Now, I know that we have little to no control over what happens south, and this planning cannot take place in a vacuum. I understand that. But we need to do something to take the lead because most likely, Clark County would be the most logical landing area for a crossing in south... An additional crossing in southwest Washington. It may be in a different county, and maybe Oregon already has a plan. I mean, we already know they're supporting, or hopefully, supporting Hood River, New Hood River Bridge. But we need to start planning. In the absence of planning, what we end up having ultimately are increasing loss of the ability to grab rights of way. You know, what you're going to end up with bad planning or no... And the absence of planning is ultimately someday having to bulldoze down neighborhoods in order to gain access to a right of way. We've seen examples of that across the nation's history. We don't want to do that. You know, we have the tyranny of terrain. We have preserves, we have wetlands, and development is just gobbling up access to these rights of way. You know, if we can put a plan or an alternative plan that we can then start discussing with Oregon, whichever stakeholders there want to jump in, then we can start looking at where we need those rights of way, how much it'll cost, before you can even begin the funding process of trying to figure out how you can buy those rights of way. But right now, we're doing nothing. And I know how complicated this is, what you've just teed up for us. And no doubt, you don't want to take on any additional work. But we need that future planning. We absolutely have to do it, and we're not. So I'm going to advocate once again that somehow we commit some amount of resources to doing some real planning work on where that tunnel could be, where that bridge could be, where that other railroad crossing could be. I mean, we need another corridor for freight mobility, economic development, quality of life, relief from congestion, all of the things that this briefing points out to. But in the long-term planning, we are ignoring all of those impacts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair Bowerman, if I can? I just wanted to add or share one quick thing. I know Oliver's group, and I believe Public Works is part of the conversation in community development and RTC. They actually have been having discussions. As you mentioned, it's not easy. There are a lot of jurisdictions that could be impacted. And once they finalize proposed options, it will be coming to the council. But they have been intentionally working on, you know, how this could work and what could be presented to council.
Chris, did you start to say something?
Yes. Yes, Chair Barman, thank you. Great points, Counselor Medbaji. I just wanted to clarify that the 20-year capital facility plan is the umbrella that we operate under. So in order to get projects that would go on to that, then we would be able to bring them into our plan. When we're talking about an alternative corridor, that's something that would easily be in that menu, if you will, of that capital facility plan. But we're talking about crossings involving other states. That's something that is above the county. It would at least involve WashDOT, ODOT, possible cities if it's going through their areas. So it's a little bit deeper. I don't know how that would also be on that capital facility plan. But as far as this six-year transportation improvement program and the 23 annual construction program, they are direct projects that are brought in through that capital facility plan. So in order for us to bring it in through our area here, they have to then be on that 20-year projected. And last year, I believe Oliver did provide some updates as far as when the next update to that would be. I think it had to do with something else falling into line before they started to study it. But unfortunately, that is the box that we operate in, that capital facility plan. So before they're brought in to us, they need to be on it. But again, the crossings would be something above and beyond our program as it stands now, originally from the East Coast. So I've worked on a lot of the New York, New Jersey bridges and tunnels in the past. I know the importance of having multiple routes and how quickly they could be parking lots. So great points. Thank you.
Counselor Medbaji and I have been trying to interject the subject of the third corridor, certainly along with others, every single chance that we get. And it's great to hear that RTC and Jose and others are talking about it independently. I would suggest that those conversations need to start occurring with council now, not just as a fait accompli. I wondered if we could look back to slide number five, which is, I think, the one in which you kind of give an overview of steps that are involved in getting something into the tip. Would you discuss just a little bit about getting the third corridor from the perspective of this chart into the tip?
Sure. The comprehensive plan and the resultant of it is the 20-year capital facilities plan. Currently, the capital facilities plan is 2015 to 2035, and I believe there's an update coming. They revise it, you know, often, but it stays within the realm of those years. But once a project is added to it, we would then score it into our tip. And something as important as an alternate corridor, excuse me, would score fairly well. Obviously, we would have a capacity issue that would bring it into the transportation improvement program much quicker than a road that's not going to serve us many people and that like. But the first step of it is going through the planning side, Oliver's group, to get to that 20-year capital facility plan. And then from it, we could bring it into the transportation improvement program.
And Chair, if I can just add, I was looking at some materials that have been shared with me. There is a collaborative staff report on the transportation corridors and potentially an RFQ scope of work. So we'll get that in front of council, maybe starting in 101s and then bring it to a council time for further discussion.
Can we do that soon? Maybe next Monday for the 101s?
I would like to have Oliver there, and I just need to confirm that he's going to be in the office.
Well, if he is, let's go for it. Because I think much of the planning that is taking place now on the I-5 is actually quite relevant and will impact some of this. So, and particularly as we hear more and more concern about the I-5 that is being voiced and therefore the need for dealing with traffic congestion. Other comments or communications from council or from Kathleen? Anything? Okay, I believe then we are ready to move on, and thank you very much for this report. And obviously, we'll be hearing a lot more about it, not just in November, but leading up to that hearing date, too.
Thank you, Chair Barman.
Thank you.